This conference will now be recorded.
I'll just be in the work. Go call a little Shannon.
Mayor Tavio.
Here.
Commissioner Bolt.
Here.
Commissioner Campos.
Here.
Commissioner Butcher.
Here.
And the minutes will show that Commissioner Danny is not ready.
Please need prayer, please. Many may have missed this. Lord, thank you for this evening. Thank you for allowing us once again to gather in this chamber, Loveington Chamber. Lord, as we do grandest wisdom and plenty of knowledge, Lord, follow with that wisdom. Lord, in all we make our decisions tonight and as we move this city forward, Lord. Ask you to bless our United States, Lord. Keep us safe, Lord. May you bless the people of this nation, Lord, that they may all make the right decisions and follow the lead with good heart, Lord. And ask you also to bless our soldiers at bar, Lord, and the ones that are present here in our nation, Lord, as well as our police department, bar department, and all the people that help us with COVID, as well as keeping peace within our communities. Lord, I ask you in your name, amen. Our collective leaders, including the Black American United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands on the issue under. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
How many of the agenda? Also, motion by Commissioner Bart Bernard second by Commissioner Bolt. Roll call.
Commissioner Butcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Campos.
Yes.
Mayor Tavio.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt.
Yes.
Do I have another?
Yes, I'd like to make a vote through the consideration of minutes from May 11th, 2020 and May 26th, 2020.
Say, both was made by Commissioner Bolt or taken by Commissioner Bernard. Roll call Shannon.
Commissioner Butcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt.
Yes.
Commissioner Campos.
Yes.
Mayor Tavio.
Yes.
Moving on to Commissioner Stafford White.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, I would just like to give a brief update on the Commercial Street project. We are on schedule and moving forward. Other than that, I'm open for any questions.
I just had a boy. Yeah, what I don't know about Patricia or James and this, but you know, the ninth street, big hall. Is there anything we can really do about that inside all where the heat's building and uh whatever? We can get lots of calls from different people wanting to know what can the city do about that?
Wyatt. I can make a look at that if you'll give the exact location to James. That way we can get a look and take a look at that.
Okay, I'll get with you on that. It's just south of Samerson's right there.
Do I have a company that's doing that Commercial Street project?
It is Constructors Inc.
They seem to be moving along pretty good. They're doing a pretty good job. I will check that. It looks pretty good.
So any more questions for Wyatt? There's no other further questions here?
Yes, sir. They are moving forward at a fast pace, getting everything.
Okay, thank you.
You know, Mayor, Mayor Commission, really what I want to report is they've been in communication with our new auditors. And because of the COVID-19, we're in a situation where they may or may not require us to do kind of a distance audit, where they would stay in their office and we would have to email them and vote things on their website. So it's a question mark based on the decisions that our governor makes as to whether or not we'll actually have them here in-house this year. That's all I have to report.
Yes, sir. Here again, I was up like, how are we coming on the credit card payment? Is it rolling along pretty good on that? Are we able to make bill payments?
Yes, sir. We're able to make our payments on a monthly basis. Really, the issue is as long as our GRT keeps coming here, this is asking about.
The water.
The water utilities.
Oh, sorry, I think I'm really glad to hear that.
Yes, it was not clear on that. We haven't had a lot of payments yet, but the site is up and functioning. And we've had probably more users than we're aware of using our new phone app or using the credit card. And had a lot of positive feedback about it already.
That's great. Thank you.
And this is the first day we rolled it out.
That's awesome.
Commissioner Campos, you have anything for Garrett?
I'm sorry, come again?
Do you have anything for Garrett?
No.
Moving on to Shannon. Commissioner Bolt. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bernard.
Good to do.
Commissioner Campos.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Rodriguez.
He was having some difficult.
Chief Lozark.
He is actually on the case.
Sorry. It's Chief Rodriguez.
I'd like to ask you a couple of questions.
Yes, Board would like to ask you a question, Commissioner. I mean, excuse me, Chief.
They chief with Commissioner Bolt. I wanted to ask you, how's the personnel holding up with everything that's going on these days?
Uh, they're good. They're trucking along. They're taking it day by day.
Uh, you guys, is there any, anything you guys need at all?
What was that you were cutting in and out?
I was asking if there's anything you guys need.
Uh, not at this time, sir. We're good right now.
I just wanted to let you know to stand behind you a hundred percent. So if you need anything, just feel free to reach out.
Thank you so much, sir. We'll keep that in mind.
Thank you, Commissioner. So any more questions for Chief Rodriguez? Okay, moving on to Chief Lozark. He's not here with us today. City Manager James Williams.
Uh, yes, sir. I'm here, Commissioners. Real quick, just to kind of give you a look at how we have set up the online payments on our website. You can access it directly off of our city's website. You just go Loveington Network. Um, you can click there. You can also dial the 1-800 number to make a payment over the phone. Uh, one thing that we did do is we do have an instructional video. It's about six minutes and forty-three seconds long. Kind of walks you through how you set your account up, also how you make payments, you can schedule payments, and just some different features on the site. Uh, there are a couple of things, uh, well, actually three things. One, Tyler is having to convert our forms for your actual monthly bill to where residents can actually pull them up and see them on the website. We hopefully will have that on in the next two weeks. It, all it shows right now is their current bill and the amount due. Uh, the second thing is there are some, there is one module that's not up yet, and that is for service requests such as meter re-reads. Uh, we have to go into the back end of the software to set up some codes to where it will automatically email those to the customers. They'll always have to call City Hall to request different types of service. The third thing is the 1-800 number. We only have the telephone payments available in English only right now. Tyler has not developed a Spanish translation yet. However, I know here he's been on the phone with them to let them know that payments is something that we need. Uh, they received several service requests, so they are working on getting that feature activated through that 1-800 number. Uh, just to kind of let everybody know, because I know there are, there were in the past, and sites that say, hey, you can pay your utility bills here. Uh, just to kind of show you what the homepage of the actual billing website looks like, should pull up. Uh, this is what it looks like. It does have the city's logo. It has the picture of City Hall. Uh, customers, if will need in order to register their account, they'll need to set it up, provide some email, as well as a phone number, then they will need their account number even in the last, the amount of the last payment they had. If for some reason they don't have their bill, they can call down to City Hall and we will be happy to provide them that information after we verify that it is them. Uh, one of the neat features that we have, a couple of different features that we have on this is that you can send out notifications via voice call or actually text message. Uh, and then it can also email your reminders, and those are customizable for those, for those customers. Uh, for those who have rental properties, you'll have to register your, your user account once, and you can add multiple accounts to that. Uh, so it's, it's very functional. I know that today we were encouraged for people to use the phone system until we actually got our video made. But if there's any questions, we always ask people to call. So we'll be happy to walk them through, but it's just another convenience that we have. Uh, a need, another neat feature is they can actually want to see what their assumption was online. Uh, so there's, uh, there's that. Is there any questions on the utility payments?
No.
Okay. The other thing that we have, of course, we did our drive-in movies Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Uh, it was very successful, especially the first time that we've done it. Uh, I know the first night we counted about 216 cars. Uh, then on Friday and Saturday, we got over 350 each night. Uh, so there's different things that we're looking at to improve on next time that we do. We don't have it being scheduled yet. Um, but it was, it was a pretty cool, cool experience. The wind was not really helping the situation out. We had to do some troubleshooting on Saturday night. I'm really interested in the last 10 minutes of the movie, but it was a, it was a good success. So gives everybody something to do. Um, the last thing that I have, I provided you a copy, and I apologize, Commissioner Campos, I didn't forward you this email, but we do have an individual who is, they couldn't attend tonight. Uh, but they were wanting the commission to consider maybe changing our local code to allow chickens to be raised for egg production in the city limits. Uh, right now, our city code says that you can't own a bough within the city limits. Uh, but they were just asking, they did start a petition, which I believe is attached. They did one online, also, so here's a printed version of it. Uh, they were just asking if you would consider doing that. Uh, if the commission would like staff to research and file what other communities are doing, we'd be more than happy to bring that to the commission at a future commission day for your review. And see if I can.
Thank you for that, James.
Yes. Sounds good. Joe, can I have a question?
Yes, sir.
Was the big tree, I know that that was what I know, said I remember a while ago to the state. And if you were anything back on that post.
No, we have not. In fact, we do have an item on or attended tonight for permission action in relation to that project. It's my understanding that it is moving forward. Uh, we were providing information on a possible grant uh, through the Economic Development Administration with, uh, which we have submitted a preact petition. Uh, but this is actually money that is tied to COVID response and mitigation. So we done some, uh, grant, uh, part of the preact connection was how can we tie this to response and mitigation for COVID in the future? So we are actually trying to find some other, other funding, but the state is still proceeding as far as we know.
Okay. Uh, June first sale of the plan. Let's go on that one bit.
Commissioner, I'm gonna give you guys an update. Uh, we did speak to the company prior to the meeting. We should receive permits this week. It was a little struggle, but we are now finally able to receive those. There was a few missing pieces, documentations, background checks that were required in order for them to process the permits. All that has been submitted. We should receive something back this week. Um, Brian mentioned it possibly come sometime in June, the end of June to set up the sale to sign on the part. They will not sign unless they have that. But it's still moving forward.
So all the permits, we have all the permits, all the paperwork?
We shouldn't have it this week. All paperwork's in order. We should, we're waiting in the process, those documents. We should have it this week. And then they are working on the chief, out of chief's kind of doing some roof repairs and the fire processing system should be complete within the next two years as well.
Okay.
We're hoping for partial occupancy. The chili plant will move out at the end of the month. Their lease will expire June period, so that would give you more space.
Okay.
But everything's still.
I was gonna say also, I've had several people wanting to know who do they need to seem to apply for jobs out there? Are they going to start opening that up pretty quick for employment or?
They are, they are. We actually have the applications at our office where they can actually go onto our website, our PC server. And they, they can download the application, they can email it back to us, or they can come by the office and drop it off. But we haven't actually received petitions or hiring before. It's just, we just have a folder, and whenever it's time, they're ready to start the hiring process. They will contact everyone that's on, that submitted applications, starting hiring.
Do you have any idea of the number?
Uh, I would say immediately it's going to be about fifty. Immediately about fifty. And we are working on, been moving right now, so we are looking to that to deal with the, there's other people looking at that area as well, too. So hopefully, hopefully it'll be more than one of that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is, is there any other question for James? About the board? There's no other questions? Attorney Patrick.
Uh, none there, sir.
Or have any questions for Patrick?
Yes, Patrick, I know we can talk about this now, but I don't have a full session yet. Do you have anything, anything come forward?
I don't want to discuss it.
Okay.
Sir, is there anything that's related to a session?
Okay, okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
So any other questions? City Attorney Patrick. There's no other questions? Moving on to public comment.
Sorry, originally I wasn't going to do it all at once, but I wanted to leave you guys in the date on the car level. Um, they are working on the plans now. They are aware that the property that they purchased is in the flood zone, so they're going to have to make accommodations. But we also are including a two-way quick loop to the car wash, so that they will begin the construction of that. We should have a finish date of January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, which has completed the project. Um, there is three sets of tanks that are out of the property, so they have to put the proper regulations to get it to remove.
Who's doing the construction on that?
I believe Ramirez and Santos. Ramirez and Santos is doing it. They're going to do the renewal of the tanks and be there. They're going to be just avoid, um, will be doing the actual. And then on the shopping center, they, I know that they have two, they're not to sign on two leases out of the shopping center. One fifteen hundred square foot and one thousand. So we have two spaces available. Hotels will go on as well, but utilities within the next week or two.
And as we heard, even the latest phone, the coffee shop, those are doing the structure.
Yeah, and they should be completed ninety-eight. Moving very quickly, I would think that the plumbing, uh, a couple of days ago, Friday was completed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to non-action items. James?
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, in your packets, you have the retail recruitment draft ordinance and the light certificate to come back up. And present this, if I, uh, we're, we have the opportunity to enter into a partnership with the county agency of their companies.
Yeah, for a time. Um, we'll see the agreement in front of you. Uh, our, our contract, the retail strategies will expire on December, end of summer. Eight to ten in December. Um, E C Lee County, their contract expired in the January, with their contract. So they went in their regional, um, contract, and that included London, and it actually came in cheaper for us if we decided to go with them. Um, the difference between retail strategies and the retail coaches will actually be able to see who they have talked to. They're actually able to see the name, phone number, and what the comments were, who they've been talking to. Um, they will be here on Wednesday at nine AM. They will do a drive-through of Loveington of the available properties inside for potential retailers. Um, they will also get a weekly report as well that shows how many folks are actually going to Hops to shop instead of shopping in London. We'll also get an updated of the top ten, um, recruitments. So the way the retail strategies did was we needed, number one on the list was we needed the brochures. Number two, show that we needed another hardware store, stuff like that. So we'll get, get another updated report of what London lacks, if what make it, we should report. Um, to start trying to recruit, but we don't know that until the brochures have been completed. Um, feel very comfortable. I mean, we've already chatted with them about two, three times. Communication is awesome. Um, that's something that we lacked at our last consultants is communication. Um, the benefit with the retail coaches that, like I said, will be able to actually get the contact from the franchises, from, uh, having numbers or stuff. When the retail strategies, they just, I talked to him, he says, we'll get back, but we didn't have much information, just. That's, you have any questions for me on the recent question?
Is that, uh, on the regional side of it, is that with, uh, all?
So it's joint with E C Lee County, Missy. Um, there was, there's actually been two portals that they will be constructing. One's for London, one's for Hops. I will be managing the London one, and Missy will be managing the Hops units job. We'll each have our portal, we each have our own representative, so she'll have her own representative talking to her about hers, and then I'll have mine. That would be for London.
So with this memorandum of understanding, have you already joined?
We have.
Is one's already changed names?
We have.
Okay. I read through this, and I just had a couple of questions. The project at a minimum creation of two new businesses, a minimum of six full-time jobs employed. By one of all the new businesses in two years. What happens if that doesn't come into consideration?
So, uh, Mayor, Commissioner Bolt, in the event that that does happen, the city commission could request that the Loveington U C refund that fund to the city.
Okay. Well, the other question I have is, this is for two years. Now here it says that we are, the project will require three-year financial commitment. So in three years, we'll be in for three years. This year stipulates that within two years, these should be done. What goes on for the third year?
So the E C Lee County signed a three-year agreement, and we have only signed a one-year agreement.
So you only like to sign one year at a time?
That's what we did. Fifteen thousand was only for one year. They signed in two years, we've only done one.
Okay. I just wanted to find out, because it says in here, a three-year financial agreement.
They, that's their contract. They just brought it in, and when they did bring it up, then they wanted to help contribute towards.
Right, right. And as far as this two company here compared to the last company, as far as what kind of results, because I understand James told me it was like a hundred forty thousand dollars for three years, four years. What do we get from that?
So as those three years, uh, we, they weren't able to recruit the Dollar Tree. The Dollar Tree is part of that, and as well as the hotel, hotels are a project. So, um, those are the two projects that we were getting for the.
These. Okay. This company seems to be quite a bit better than what's happened earlier work.
Absolutely. The other companies from Alabama, this company's at Dallas, and they're in the area. Their technology is a lot better than retail strategies is. Um, their reports are a lot better. Project showed you guys the reports that during the pandemic, they were able to pull, or do reports within town that, so it showed that McDonald's was forty percent down, normal visits about five thousand a day, and they're receiving about fifteen hundred a day. Sonic was up twenty-eight percent. So I mean, that was something that they did on their own, we didn't ask for that. That was just kind of to let us know how our community was doing.
So are they just going out of credit card sales or grocery receipts? What are they going out with, you know?
I, the last, I think, was data that had to do with cell phone data.
People that walked in the door.
That's, that's what we were doing.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any? Moving on to tonight. Do I have a motion? Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for ordinance five eighty-three, ordinance of the city of Loveington, New Mexico, admitting item three, charter thirteen point sixteen lottery.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Bolt. Discussion. James?
Mayor Commissioners, this ordinance has been advertised. If you recall, the state of New Mexico get an act changes to lottery tax code, uh, which we are adopting to implement in our current code out for five percent occupancy tax on states for less than thirty to seventy days in hotels. Uh, with the latest chapter bill that the state passed in the last session, which goes through eventual lifers, this allows for a five percent occupancy tax on all states regardless of length of time. Uh, and this also includes places that are not in temporary residence. This does not include apartments, uh, but this is for RV parks. This was actually, I don't remember who the sponsor was, but this was generated out of either leader, what county was, who carried this bill. Uh, for states that are thirty days or less, uh, there is a certain percentage which.
Uh, for states that are thirty days or less, uh, there is a certain percentage, which hits roughly twenty-five percent. But the proceeds of that has to be used on event promotions, uh, the rest can be used on any permissible means that are identified in the ordinance, uh, which that is spelled out in the ordinance that we have for approval tonight. Anything for states thirty-one days or more, uh, that can be used for any permissible use as advised, uh, so you can use that for mental operations as well. Uh, I know, uh, Gary and the finance department, uh, they are going to be conducting audits uh, at each of the places where lodging is offered, uh, just to make sure, not that we doubt, uh, the the funds that they do submit on a monthly basis are accurate, but it is pointed out in the code that we do need to conduct, we have the ability to, but we also need to conduct these audits, that they have created a new, uh, report that they have to submit with their payments, which helps us identify which states are thirty days or less and which are for thirty-one days or more, uh, so that way we use the funds appropriately. Uh, but we would, uh, uh, recommend that the commission put in this ordinance.
Hello, James?
Yes, sir.
This is Commissioner Campos, just a quick question, uh, do you have any projected, uh, estimates of how much of an increase this will be in our largest, largest tax by chance?
Uh, Mayor, uh, Mayor Commissioner Campos, uh, we actually, uh, when Gary and I were, uh, looking at this, uh, we just took a look at aerial views of the, the known RV parks that we have, the larger ones, and I believe we calculated on seventy percent occupancy. It would generate, uh, potentially up to forty thousand dollars in additional lodgers tax for, per year.
Good, good, thank you.
So any other questions about the board? There's no further questions, so call both Shannon.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Ordinance has passed. Do I have a motion?
Just really like to make a.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, I'd like to make a motion to consider resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-five, approval of agreements between the city and New Mexico Department of Transportation for temporary construction permits for the New Mexico eighteen roadway project.
I'll second that. Motion was made, but made by Commissioner Campos, seconded by Commissioner Bernard.
James? Uh, Mayor, Mayor Commissioners, the New Mexico DOT, uh, as you know, are working on getting essentially paperwork finished for the Main Street reconstruction project. Uh, part of those is, uh, temporary construction permits. Uh, this is where they may do some grading, as well as storage of different material during the construction process. Uh, part of the federal guidelines are that whenever you have, uh, either a temporary construction permit or achievement, you have to provide fair market value, so all of the properties where, uh, the TCBs have been considered uh, along Main Street, all of those owners have been provided, uh, a copy of appraisal report, as well as identification of the temporary construction permit area. So the city actually owns three pieces of property within the construction area. Uh, the first one is along Main Street at the corner of Central, and, uh, in Main Street, right alongside walk of uh, on the south, I'm sorry, the east side of Main Street by Fran Ashley Park, appraised value is two hundred fifty dollars. Uh, the second one, uh, is right in front of our Chamber of Commerce, about sixteen hundred square feet, and that appraised at three hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, also, the parking lot located right there at Avenue F, Avenue F in Main Street, our senior citizens parking lot, a total of, uh, four hundred and thirty-four square feet, or total value of three hundred dollars. Uh, I know that considering the, you know, investment and the benefits of the public, stat level potentially, we are of the opinion that we, we can actually just provide the state, uh, these temporary construction permits at no, at no cost, and this is what this resolution does. Is it allows us to, uh, execute those agreements and provide that, uh, the use of that property at no cost to anonymity.
James, how about for private industry, or is there any conflict on that side? You talk about, do we have any, uh, public property on, on eighteen?
That, that is all between, uh, the state and those private property.
Okay, so they'll get what they.
They, they, if there is a temporary construction permit, uh, or even what they call a take, uh, those owners are being contacted by certi, by contact by certified, they have a Department of Transportation. So it starts with temporary, what's considered temporary from start to finish of the project? We don't know when that will be.
Yes, sir.
So I'm just still listening, that some of these are sidewalks and entrances to facilities. How's that going to affect any of that? For the most part, uh, DOT assures, uh, that there is access to those businesses. There may be some minor, the, the biggest impact, uh, potentially be the Main Street entrance to the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, or will you have some alternative routes that they can take to, to that building? And then the senior citizens center there, the. Uh, the senior citizens center, this is, uh, I guess you'd say it's a backup parking lot, they can actually access that parking area right off of, it's a little bit further west on Avenue F.
Turning up the questions by the board? There's no other questions, go call both Shannon.
Mr. Trujillo?
Yes.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
President Bush passes. Do I have a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, resolutions twenty twenty dash zero three six, approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-one, professional services agreement between the City of London, Chamber of Commerce.
Second that.
Motion was made, made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Campos. James?
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, uh, these are our annual agreements, uh, we have made some changes this year. Uh, each, uh, this is actually for all three of these agreements, we can just prove by, uh, individual resolutions, but to specifically speak to the chamber, uh, some of their scopes, of course, we're not able to party in the park, uh, this year, which falls right at the end of fiscal year. Uh, that's just due to the current economic climate, uh, my funding for the chamber to put that event on. We are, uh, planning on, uh, the fireworks display, uh, right now, unless we receive any other word from the state saying we can't do it, or fireworks were reported months ago, uh, so we'll still be in public display on the fireworks that can be seen from all over town. Um, in addition to that, they are, uh, looking, uh, we've added specifically the fall winner, arts and crafts festival, uh, as a deliverable. They are, uh, going to want to be conducting the business state safe stop list, uh, coordinated fare parade, subject to county contract, and then they'll do two additional quality allowances that essentially promote businesses within the city. Uh, they are, uh, going to be continuing the three business development, uh, improvement or retention workshops and job fairs, uh, for the next fiscal year. One thing that is very, uh, similar in all three of the agreements is under, uh, the utilities provision. Uh, we are working on getting an energy audit over at that facility, but the Chamber of Commerce building for a facility that only has uh, really four, basically four, full-time equivalent employees, uses about thirty-two percent more electricity than city hall. Uh, so we are performing an energy audit to find out, is it equipment over there that's causing it, or is it just occupancy that's creating this? Uh, we did put language in there that in the event it does exceed a building of like size, that they will be responsible for helping to cover that overage. Uh, if it is a, uh, uh, mechanical, uh, or a building issue, that's obviously on us. However, uh, I don't have an anticipated timeline on that energy audit. But those are the significant changes to the actual agreement. Uh, this is, this particular agreement is funded fifty percent by general, fifty percent by lottery tax proceeds.
And we currently provide this the building at no cost, as well as maintenance, right?
Correct, uh, I know that, uh, and that is one thing, uh, chamber is actually going to help coordinate the, the the maintenance of the inside, they're also part of the, the deliverables, uh, are to maintain the exterior as well. However, we'll provide those supplies, uh, materials, we'll pay for maintenance and repairs, but in the agreement, we pay for phones, we pay for internet, and all of those other facilities as well.
Is there any questions by the board?
Yes.
I would ask, James, have you mentioned, you mentioned yourself for this?
Sorry?
Does he need to have stands and supplies and stuffs?
To be safe, I think, probably should, um, you certainly participate in the discussion, uh, issues, pros and cons, I think as far as a vote, that would probably be the safer way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. There's no other questions, go call both Shannon.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Yes. Stand. President with the pass. Do I have a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a presentable motion for resolutions twenty twenty zero thirty-seven, approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-one professional service agreement between the city and the London Economic Development Corporation.
Second that.
That motion was made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Bowles, James?
Uh, yes, Mayor Commissioners, uh, the, uh, the significant changes that we have, uh, in this particular agreement, uh, we did reduce the, uh, number of PROs, which is a request for interest, that the state of New Mexico releases, uh, from four to three, and that's simply due to the fact that state is not releasing those in light of the COVID, uh, and we still have a recruitment of at least ten different businesses, it can be a combination of manufacturing, uh, retail, or other industrial applications, uh, and then we still have our site visits, uh, but, uh, in addition, the only other, uh, change it forces the language in regards to utilities.
Is there any discussion by the board?
Yes, so I'm asking, James, you said it can be a variety of businesses, you said, as far as retail. Correct, uh, yes, sir, uh, it can be a combination of manufacturing, other industrial type businesses, uh, but retail can also be included in that.
Okay.
Whatever, I just didn't know what you were saying.
James, I forgot to mention, uh, is there any language to include that, um, since not all the offices are occupied, it, it is certain like, if we got another entity, I'm just saying, do we have anybody other than three in that office?
That's true.
Nobody else, but, no, I know we talked about somebody else coming in there. Uh, not, not recently, but years ago, I was, uh, yes, American Commissioners, I was one of the three foundation.
Okay. Uh, to be honest, there's really no other room, uh, over there for an additional. Let's see.
Is there any other discussion by the board? There's no other discussion, go call both Shannon.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Resolution passed. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I can make a motion, resolution twenty twenty dash zero three eight, approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-one professional service agreement between the city, London, Main Street.
Second.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Bowles, seconded by Commissioner Bernard.
James, uh, Mayor Commissioners, uh, with main street agreement, we do have the utility language in there. Uh, however, the, uh, significant changes that we have, of course, Halloween and Applause is not listed as deliverable. Uh, in addition, uh, to take the place of that, as well as, uh, uh, some of the old deliverables, they aren't going to assume maintenance, uh, Fran Ashley store or park, as well as the mobiles on Central Avenue exchange, we'll, we'll supply the material and the equipment, they're just going to supply, uh, the labor to take care of those.
James, oh, uh, in reference to the, the mobile food wagon on these utilities on that.
They are plugged into, uh, the. At the cost of. But, uh, um, I believe the last truck runs through.
City Commissioners? I'm here, um, the food truck will run until the first week of August, um, we have five candidates that go through it, they will be, uh, switching out every two weeks. Um, and there's a day in between for like cleanup and like that kind of stuff. Uh, but it will technically only run from May to August, and then that's it.
And that's six days a week?
No, it depends on them, um, some of them will have different hours that vary, so like this week's, um, which is Yaya, she's only doing two a week, so it, it changes periodically depending on their hours.
Thank you, Mayor. Ma'am, is this, is this going to be ongoing, is what our virtues are going to have a, a utility, a normal utility bill?
I'm sorry?
Covering by the cities.
Uh, I can, I can answer for you, um, they, they will have a second class, and, uh, based on, uh, the performance of the first vendor and what the city's going to receive off of our receipt stacks, it covers, uh, the cost of providing electricity to them.
Is there any more discussion by the board?
Yes, one question for Patrick, I recuse myself from this. Here, I'm a member of the Main Street on the board.
Right, I think, second.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other further discussion, go call both Shannon.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes.
Resolution passed. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to consider a count payable.
Motion was made by Commissioner Campos, seconded by Commissioner Bowles, Gary, your manager, Commissioner. With this particular list of payables, we have three, the more expensive items, the most expensive is Casco Industries, near the top, forty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-five, that's a little different than the normal expenditure, it's primarily safety equipment, but I can't remember what it was, new fire station, the fire truck.
That, uh, that expenditure is actually in relation to the fire protection fund grant that we received to buy the bunker here for fire department part of the cap issue.
And then our third largest expenditure is with Remsta USA, with the, say, a little cheese plant, and then all those issues, how about the wastewater treatment? Needed a couple of new pumps, and that's what they provided there. And that's the thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty-two, and the third, most expensive, was through Sonic Equipment, and we had to replace the server at the theater. And if you have any other questions, I'm available to answer them.
Gary? Commissioner, Commissioner Campos here. Could you repeat what you said about Remsa? What do they supply? Remsa USA?
Pumps. With the work on the cheese plant, we needed to install a new pump related wastewater. And also the treatment plant needed a pump as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Could you also speak to change healthcare? I think that was like sixty-nine hundred dollars. What was that about?
Now that we're contracting with change healthcare for the ambulance billing, that was our fee for, I want to say, the last three months. But anyway, that was the fee that we paid them for their billing services.
Okay, thank you.
The ENMU?
ENMU.
EMS.
Yeah.
Now, school that they did right now? I didn't know with COVID, if they were doing it or not.
I'm switching over to distancing.
That's, yes.
Can I give you a comment on the pump for the cheese plant?
Yes.
Just to add on the cheese plant, they were back a little bit earlier that went out was actually correct due to the cold weather. Since it was vacant, that we purchased it with the city and liked it, we were able to get it at a cheaper price. But the EDC will be paying the city a little bit. It's just being filtered through the city. We were waiting on a network from you and then we will pay you back. Our probation.
How much was it that we just spent?
I believe it was like six thousand.
That sounds about right. It's less than second amount.
Yes. And because by ourselves, it's thirteen thousand, so by the city, it's half. By order of forest and the reverse in city.
Hundred percent interest.
Oh, yes.
Gary?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Campos, once again, the Visa credit card, nine nine forty-two, twenty-eight seventy-five charges on that. That's a little high for a card. I was just curious about that.
Again, refer that to the C D N.
Mayor, Commissioner Mayor Campos, they, that's definitely mine. We pay for our Google accounts. We also pay for our two meetings. We pay for Visa. We also have had some COVID-related expenses that were charged to that particular park. That's actually low compared to what we normally have for that particular party.
What kind of a COVID-related expenses, James?
We had to buy some equipment mainly to allow us to do a lot of the distance. Medics, remotely, some of the equipment that we're actually using tonight.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Is there any other question by the board? There's no other questions. We'll call both Shannon.
Commissioner Ball?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Now, there was our group. Do I have a final motion? Yes, I'd like to make a motion. Second, motion was made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Ball. There's more discussion. We'll call both.
Commissioner Ball?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
And Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Beating is adjourned.